I'd like to welcome each of you tonight to the Wilson County Commission Meeting, August the 17th, 2020. And we're happy to have our guests with us tonight. I do see some guests in the back, and Commissioner Weathers is going to find out exactly who is with us so we can introduce them. But it's like we've got, Commissioner Weathers? 293 Troop from Lebanon, glad to have you tonight with us, and thanks for being here. Come back anytime you have a chance. At this time, if you will, Aaron, Mr. Kurtz will have the prayer, and then Commissioner Rich will do the pledge. I'll ask all of you to rise, please.
Can I, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Bow your head, pray with me, please. Lord, we're just so thankful for the day that we had today, and definitely for the hope that we're gonna have another day tomorrow, Father. And I pray that our actions and interactions with each other are not only heartfelt, Lord, but they are also in line with how you formed us to be, Father, and that's out of love for each other, as you commanded us in John, Father. And I ask that you put a hedge of protection around our children, and our teachers, and then our school leaders, so that we can move forward, return into our lives before we knew COVID, Father. And finally, Father, pray by the heart of those who don't know you, those that have fallen short, and that we realize your son died for all of us, and we declare Jesus as Lord, and our faith in you will prevail. I say all this in Christ's name. Amen.
You would follow me to pledge to our country. I pledge allegiance in the United States of America, through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both, men. You will please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Do I have identified the ones that are on the computer mic? Do they need to say you're here, or is... The presence tonight by video would be Commissioner Lauren Breeze, Commissioner Cindy Bannock, Commissioner Sarah Patton, Commissioner Jerry McFarland, Commissioner Mike Kurtz, Commissioner Terry Ash, Commissioner Kevin Costley. Am I missing anybody now? Mr. Stafford will be absent tonight. She has... 24 present, one absent. This time, we'll go to the steering committee, and if you could, Aaron, if you could give me Commissioner Patton. Aaron, do you hear me?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton, steering, please.
Mayor, your mic being heated.
Commissioner?
Nope.
Huh?
Unmute my mic?
Yeah. Thank you.
Got it? Commissioner Patton? Am I good now? Commissioner Patton, steering? Aaron?
Directly right after the minutes committee met, and I knew that they'd be approved as written.
Got a motion on the steering committee, and a second. I have two sets of minutes there, or two sets of steering committee minutes in front of you. Are there any questions from anybody? Seeing none?
Seeing none.
I hear, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Adoption of the agenda. Commissioner Patton?
I make motion that we adopt the agenda.
Motion and second.
Motion and second.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. There is no consent agenda. This time, for special recognition, I'll introduce Commissioner Dan Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody here tonight. It's a great pleasure, you know, it's, we get to serve our community as commissioners for district, and we have a special individual tonight that they're having their last month with us for a short, brief period of time.
Joe Ali was with us representing District 7. And I've got to know Joe Ali, and he's
a great citizen in Lebanon here, and has a heart for Lebanon, has a heart for his country. And I'd like to recognize you and give you a gift for your service here. If you'd come up here, please.
We'd like to give you this Wilson County flag. It's art's hope and our appreciation.
Thank you, Commissioner Ali, for your service. Thank you, Mr. Walker and Ms. Vanada. Any other special recognitions at this time? Seeing none, we'll move forward the minutes committee. Commissioner Bishop?
The minutes committee met at the courthouse in the upstairs, and the minutes were approved as was sent out in your packet. And there were two sets of minutes in your packet, and I make a motion that the report may be received and filed.
I got a motion and second now. Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mayor, on page three of the minutes, under Resolution 20-7-2, it reads, "Commissioner Bishop attempted to give the report remotely, and Commissioner Blank gave the minutes committee." That was Commissioner Smith, and that name should be inserted.
Yes, I see that.
That's one correction. Do you have any others?
Not on this one.
Okay. Are you good? Ms. Bishop, you good with that? Okay. The next mural that's coming out, and so, love you to be a part of that. Continue to remember to push the census as we're making the last rounds on that, because those are dollars, of course, in our favor. And you know about what's going on, of course, at the Ag Center with the livestock show here between now and August the 23rd. Our numbers are going down. Today, we had a low of 17. Yesterday was 27. Two days before that was 23 and 23. So the first time we've had in the 20s for four days in a row, and then a 17. So that's a positive for us here. Amazon, I know you know about, at the, in Mountain Jude, at Beckwith, had a grand opening, or that had a little more of an opening because of a great building. But they also purchased another building out at the Speedway, and that might have gotten confused with some people, so didn't want that to go unlooked. They put another facility out there and using some of that particular area as well. Robert has finished up with the courthouse on the kiosk to get in on each side of the building, so everything is secure now. You need a key fob to get in on the sides, and everything is coming through the front, and all the alarms are in. So if you get a chance to see Robert Bain, thank him for the security measures that they've put in here. Apologize for not being at the Foreign Bureau opening, but had a wedding in the family, of course, and that was a good thing. Took three times to make that happen, but it did happen. But that's good news. $45,000 per year for them, which is awesome, we think. There are budget books, thanks to Aaron Maynard and his crew, on your desk, and if you need another one or two, let me know. Otherwise, that is all I have, unless you have questions for me. Seeing none, we'll move ahead. Elections and appointments. Are there any additions to be added to the notary list?
No additions.
No additions. Do I hear a motion to approve those? I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Report for the Emerged Management Committee, Commissioner Glover.
Your report.
And the Emerged Management Director's Report, Director Cooper. I'm not sure that he is here, and he is not online, to my knowledge. Nope. So therefore, if you have any questions for Director Cooper, the report is in your package. I hear him take a motion to approve that.
Motion, motion.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich.
No report.
Sheriff's Report, Sheriff Brown will not be here tonight. He did call ahead of time and let me know that. Do I hear a motion to approve his report?
Approved.
Second.
Any discussion for him? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. The Commissioner of, Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford is not here, so Commissioner Marlowe, I will yield to you for that one.
Education Committee did meet this month. The minutes are in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Thursday, August the 26th. That's impossible since the date's 17th.
[laughing]
Should be the 6th.
Good eye.
One to one. Okay. We will make that correction. Thank you for noticing that.
One night with me.
Yeah, I think I just...
That's him. I didn't do that.
Got good eyes.
Robert took him.
Find his eye doctor.
On the teams, hear me? Okay. I had a couple of texts that said we couldn't, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay. So we stand corrected on that, on the education report. Do we have a motion and a second with a correction? And Commissioner, got a second from Commissioner Walker?
Amended, yeah.
As amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you for that. Director of Schools Report, Dr. Wright, are you online, and would you like to speak? I do not see that, but she is a guest.
She is a guest there. Hear me?
Can you hear you now? Can you hear you, Dr. Wright?
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Mayor, I don't, I don't know how, for whatever reason, I don't know that I'm coming through. I take a couple of nods of heads, so I'm not sure. The only thing I would add, we had a great start to our first day of school, and again, hoping that our second first day of school, that will be tomorrow, will be as successful as it was today. We've enrolled in additional students. In fact, today, there were 40 new enrollments that came in. So other than that, unless there's questions from anyone?
Motion be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you, Doctor.
Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner, Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
No report.
Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe.
No report.
Audit Committee, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
Yes, there is.
I thought we approved them last month.
You meant last month.
Yeah, but I think...
No, we let, we met on the night of county commission meeting.
Okay.
What, the audit? No, we, we didn't meet on the night of the commission meeting.
July 20th.
Yeah, we met. We met, but it wasn't on the night of the commission. Maybe it was. I don't know. It was his night, his commission night.
Well, I don't see them in the packet, but we met on the 6th.
20th.
20th, okay.
Of July.
July. So minutes are in your packet. I make a motion.
Bag it.
Received and filed.
Any discussion? No problem. And opposed?
Yes, cable TV can be back in the upstairs conference room, actually downstairs, in the downstairs conference room, correct me on that, on Monday evening, July the 20th at 6:00 PM. I move that these minutes be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay. One more check now. Can the people that are online hear me? Can the people online hear me? Yes, okay. I'm off.
Yeah.
So Aaron, work with me on that one, if you can. Developing Tourism, Commissioner Vanada. Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Weathers.
Finance.
Health and Recreation?
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton.
I don't know if you can hear me. No report from insurance either.
Thank you for that. We hadn't gotten that far yet. Be one second. Do you have Ms. Patton where she can talk? Aaron?
We met last Thursday, August 13th. They're in your packet. Moved if...
Audio down, Mayor. I don't think you can hear me, but audio goes down. Right.
Okay. Met when, Commissioner Dow?
Last Thursday, 9:00.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Insurance, Commissioner Ash has already said that we did not meet. Judicial, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Landing Zone, Commissioner McFarland.
Landing Zone, they did meet.
Landing Zone met on August 10th, out at the Ag Center. The minutes are in your packet. I make a motion to receive and file.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay. One more check now. Can the people that are online hear me? Can the people online hear me? Yes, okay. I'm off.
Yeah.
So Aaron, work with me on that one, if you can. Developing Tourism, Commissioner Vanada. Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Weathers.
Finance.
Health and Recreation?
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton.
I don't know if you can hear me. No report from insurance either.
Thank you for that. We hadn't gotten that far yet. Be one second. Do you have Ms. Patton where she can talk? Aaron?
We met last Thursday, August 13th. They're in your packet. Moved if...
Audio down, Mayor. I don't think you can hear me, but audio goes down. Right.
Okay. Met when, Commissioner Dow?
Last Thursday, 9:00.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Insurance, Commissioner Ash has already said that we did not meet. Judicial, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Landing Zone, and Commissioner McFarland.
Landing Zone, they did meet. Landing Zone met on August 10th, out at the Ag Center. The minutes are in your packet. I make a motion to receive and file.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rules, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban Type Facility Board met August 7th, 9:00. It's in your packet. Received and filed.
Mayor, I don't have, Jerry McFarland, I don't have any audio. None.
Okay. All in favor, say aye on the Urban Type Facility Board's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Finance Director's Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard. Can they hear me, Aaron?
I'm not muted.
Couple of things to come tonight with the entire finance office staff. My initial plan was to try to do a special recognition for her, and then we decided that we would have her here with the entire finance office staff, and we would show our appreciation for her. She came to me Friday and asked me if I would please not do that, that she does not like to be in the public eye, and she was afraid that she might become emotional. And she reminded me that she is neither leaving the county nor dying. And, but I could never overstate her contribution to the finance department in the 21 years that she was with us. I mean, she served as interim finance director at least twice. She led the program when we adopted Skyward. She was in charge of that implementation. She's been the office manager. She's taken care of things before they ever got to my desk. And while I'm confident and comfortable with the people that we have in place who are going to take those roles and duties over, it would be extremely short sighted and amiss of me not to recognize such a tremendous contribution by somebody who I consider to be a very close friend for the last nine years. And I think every one of you have talked to her probably in your tenure. If you haven't, it would be rare. And I guarantee you, when you walked out of that office, you felt like you got a good answer. And again, I just want to say that. I'll move on to, I got a call today. I never know, by the way, what I'm going to talk about when I get up here necessarily. It kind of depends on the phone calls I get during the day. So I got a call, I'm going to try to explain, which is why you got a copy of a CGFM study guide page on your, on your desk. The first arrow there, you see there's two arrows. The first one, that first sentence, you know, "An important characteristic of governmental funds is the lack of a match between resources and their uses." Why did you give me that? Because if you look at your budget book, which you hopefully have, on, starting on page 18, and going on through page... I'm sorry, not on 18, ending on page 17, starting on page 13, ending on page 17, excuse me. There are over 95 different revenue lines. There are over 50 different departments. So basically, you have a pool of money that comes in from 90 different places. Your total revenues of last year were $59,181,000. You budgeted almost $61 million this year. Your property tax revenue is, let's call it 37 million of that. So more than half, but every program you fund can't be funded from property tax, clearly. So I think we're all together on the same page so far. So the question was asked of me, how is it that we can make a resolution saying that tourism will receive 11% of hotel motel tax, and yet their budget be more than? Well, flip back a couple of pages for me. I will tell you what page. You'll flip back on page three in the appropriations resolution. This is where you, as a body, adopted how much you were going to fund each and every department. Did you say what dollars were funding which programs? Never, not one time. You couldn't, even if you wanted to. I mean, if you look at those 90 different revenue sources, what, what does business tax fund? What does excess fees from the county clerk fund? What does, all those different things, what do they fund? I mean, again, I carry you back to that sentence from the CGFM study guide. "An important characteristic of governmental funds is the lack of a match between resources and their uses." You can't match them. So at the end of the day, what you appropriate them to spend, regardless if it's more or less than 11% of hotel motel tax, is what they can spend. So somebody then turned around and asked me in the same conversation, they said, "Well, what about fund 124?" So if you'll turn over to page 55 in your budget book. 15 different revenue sources as opposed to 90. This is a special revenue fund. In other words, it has designated revenues that go to meet a specific purpose. That's why it's in a special revenue fund. Its specific purpose is to fund the Ag Center and the Expo Center. That's the specific purpose of these revenues. It receives 55% of the hotel motel tax. Okay? Well, 55% did drop, so I have no choice but to drop their line. I can't reach over into the general fund like I can in tourism. Okay? Because this is out here in a separate fund all by itself. So somebody wanted to ask, why does it have this kind of a negative impact on the Expo Center or the Ag Center, but not on tourism? And that's why. So if it is your intent that hotel motel tax, whatever percentage you set for tourism, if it's your intent that that's the amount of the budget that they should receive, then basically, you have to figure out what that amount is, and that's how much you guys have to appropriate them to spend. Okay? What did we say going in? We're doing a status quo budget. Whatever your budget was last year, it is this year. You can say they receive whatever percentage all day long of hotel motel tax, but if you appropriate them more money than that to spend, that percentage means nothing. What matters is how much you appropriate. And I think the county attorney would agree with what I just So I'm trying to explain not the easiest concept in the world. Happy to entertain any questions on the subject. So are you saying that if we say 11% for tourism, we see that's the limit they get? Or is that just what we see?
What I'm telling you is, unless you write the resolution differently, which I refer to the county attorney on how that resolution would have to be written.
Right.
If you appropriate, let's say, let's say 11% is $100,000.
Right.
And in your budget deliberations, you decide, "We're going to appropriate $150,000 for tourism to spend."
Right.
Your 11% means nothing.
Exactly.
It never has meant anything.
Right. That is exactly what I'm...
Here's where 11% came from, and then 17%, and then 20. Okay? I'm going to compare this, this is the most appropriate comparison I can think of. In 2001 through 2005, six and seven, real estate prices were never going to go down. We all remember that. Okay? But the bottom fell out. Some places suffered more than others. Again, in hindsight, it's clear. It was reckless. It was, we haven't been reckless. We got hit by COVID. We could not foresee a scenario where hotel motel tax was going to go to half or a third of what it was. We never could have foreseen that scenario.
Okay. On the other hand, wait there.
Yeah, I just want to elaborate on the hotel motel tax. I can tell you, COVID has really impacted that hotel motel tax. It's changed the landscape as we know it going forward. I don't believe some of this hotel business is going to come back with corporate travel, because boardrooms and shareholders are seeing that business can happen and sales deals can happen without a lot of wine and dining and all this extra expense. You're going to see a lot of that revenue just disappear. And it's going to happen. I see it day in and day out. It's happening all across the country. So I would be very hesitant moving forward to tie anything... forward to tie anything to revenue source like the hotel motel tax to it levels back out. It's going to be less than it has been.
Right.
For a long time to come.
Aaron, I have one other. Now, but you say the Ag Center and the Expo Center is limited by that amount, 55% of the hotel motel tax?
Unless you decide to give them additional money. You have the option of transferring money to them. However, if over the course of time, this is what audit's going to do, there was a new GASB standard passed four or five years ago, that said that a special revenue fund, such as the Ag Center, such as the road department, highway capital projects, any of your special revenue funds, if the revenue coming into that fund is not sufficient to support it, in other words, if it's basically making its way off transfers from the general fund, you will be forced to close that fund as a standalone fund back into the general fund.
Exactly.
From my, from my knowledge, Aaron, when we did this 55% of hotel motel tax for the Ag Center, did we not say that that, that still could not fall below what two cents would bring in?
I know that was the intent. I don't know if that was ever memorialized in the resolution, but I know the intent was that it would, the point of the 55% is that was two cents on the property tax rate, which is what we exchanged with them. They had two cents. The Ag Center was getting two cents on property tax. We exchanged that for 55% of hotel motel tax. I couldn't speak to exactly how that was memorialized as far as would never fall below.
So if it's not in the resolution, then it doesn't matter, right?
And I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying, I don't know. So it's not the easiest concept in the world to grasp, but basically, if you, if you, if you appropriate, I'm picking on tourism. If you appropriate tourism, IT, veterans, finance, whatever you appropriate me, that's what I can spend. So it really has nothing to do with a specific revenue source. You can, you can say you get 15% of hotel motel tax, but if you decide to appropriate me to spend 25% of hotel motel tax, that's why I told you the night we did this, there's no reason for a percentage to even be listed in here for tourism, in my opinion. Yes?
Yeah, the total year-over-year numbers of sales tax revenue that received last year over this year with all the COVID and everything, and what, how do we fare through everything?
It's up considerably, even with, it's a little bit tough to give you an exact figure. Let me tell you why. One is, you've got a increase in there from the 925 to the 975 when you're looking at it year-over-year. Second is, we had, if you remember, last year, the Department of Revenue was taking some money back from us. We were overpaid about a million dollars in sales tax. So when you're looking at some of these past years, the Department of Revenue is taking money away from us. So it's hard to get an exact figure.
That's hard to get an exact figure. How do we extrapolate a half percent that's going to the schools next year at budget time? How do we extrapolate that half percent that we're going to move into the next budget for the schools?
Well, the half percent is, is, the half percent is not difficult. If hotel motel tax had stayed flat, let's just, let's just use $10 million, okay? You know, they would have gotten half a percent of the $10 million for teacher pay. They would have had to use it for teacher pay. That's the way the resolution was written. Whether sales tax went up, down, or sideways, they would have had to have, you know,
Whatever it brought in.
Whatever it brought in.
So we agreed to a number in the budget, just to fix a number in the budget, and then we decided?
We thought, what we, what we put in there was 5.2 or 5.3 million, because that's what we believed it was going to generate. Yeah. They will have to, we will know, in fact, you know, I could, if you want, try to give you a number. I don't know that it makes sense to give you a number every month, but we can give you a number and say, this is how much it actually generated at some point.
Where it's kind of trending, maybe quarterly or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir.
When will we be done paying back the excess sales tax, Aaron?
It is done. It is done. I called toward the end of the year because I needed to know whether or not we needed to book a liability back to the, to the state. And they told me no, that we had made our last payment. It was all paid back.
Just to add to that, you'll have a guy come speak to you probably next month, Charlie Curtis, that represents the county commissioners. He called me the other day and he said, Mayor, you got something really wrong. You need to call Department of Revenue. And he noticed where our numbers had gone down. He couldn't figure out why. And of course, we explained this to him, and he said, okay. So you have a lot of people looking out for you as well. Mr. Fields?
I don't know if other commissioners have ever had this experience, but I had a call from a funeral home for an indigent Wilson County citizen, that we have an indigent burial fund for cremation. And I agree, we have that, but where is that found in the budget?
If you will indulge me for just a minute, I apologize. I believe it's in the 5500 section, I believe. Oops. Yeah. There was a point in time when that was being taken advantage of, and we almost discontinued that program. I'm glad we didn't. But we, we try to be more careful. We used to, almost every year, we used to have to put more money in pauper burials, because we just had people come in. But it was very uncomfortable for me. This is kind of humorous, and y'all know I like humor. And since I won't be throwing anybody under the bus, I will tell the story. Word got out to the funeral, various funeral homes, that we had suspended the pauper burial program. And a gentleman from a funeral home, who shall remain nameless, called me and said, I have a body in my freezer. It's been there for about a week. And I understand that you guys are no longer paying the money to help offset the cost of cremation. I said, well, sir, that's my understanding too. He said, well, I'll be getting this body out of my freezer in the next 24 hours, and I need you to tell me where you want me to drop it.
Any other questions, Mr. Maynard? Hope not. I mean, your motion to approve's report? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Mr. Maynard. Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Committee met Thursday, August 6th, in the commission meeting room. Minutes in your packet, they'd be received and filed.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Aaron, where are you? No, no, come on, come on. Where's my other Aaron? Aaron, can we unmute everybody so we can hear their ayes? Folks that are on teams, I'll just ask you to answer aye, and then I'll say all opposed, no. And so if I hear anybody saying no, I'll go back and recheck it for anything that we've got. Okay? Is that good for you, Mike, or?
Everybody else can vote electronically, correct?
Yes. Everybody will vote electronically. I'll tell you what, I, yep, yep. Mayor's right. I will poll you and ask you to speak then. Sorry. I'll ask you to answer me directly. Okay? So that I, I will be able to hear. I'm correct, Aaron? Okay. Mr. Marlowe?
Resolution 20-8, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2019-2020 fiscal year by approving Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment 2021-01.
Got a motion?
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Any discussion now? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Bannock?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Costley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Breeze?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Yes.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes. Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution 20-8-2, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make a transfer from other contracted services into the general fund.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion now, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Bannock? Can I hear him? I could hear him while ago, Aaron. Can I hear him again, please? Mr. Bannock?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Costley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton? Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Yes.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes. Marlowe?
Resolution of the Board, Resolution 20-8-3, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the general fund to the COVID grant.
Got a motion in a second. Now discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Bannock?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Costley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Breeze?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Yes.
Hearts and minds good with your vote? 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-8-4, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year, make an additional appropriation from the general.
Got a motion in a second. Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Cast your vote. Commissioner Weathers? Commissioner Bannock?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Costley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-8-5, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from fund number 131 to the road commission.
Motion, second.
Got a motion in a second. Now any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Bannock?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
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 Breeze?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Yes.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-8-6, resolution of the Board of County Commission of Wilson County, Tennessee, recommending to the state legislature a boundary change between Wilson County and Davison County.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All my teams, people aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record reflected was unanimous. 24, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-8-7.
Hang on one. Set the rose for all. Make a motion.
Six was amended. Six was amended, I think. Six, we had a new version on our desk.
Yeah, we had it. All they did was just add the picture to it.
So if we go out of?
Wait a second, guys. I'm talking about number seven. Commercial purchase and sale agreement. It was by the package, but it didn't go through a committee, and it didn't have the two sponsors that it was.
You got to go out of session.
That's correct, and you really got to do that on the next floor.
Motion, go out of session.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are out of session now.
Resolution 20-8-7, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to approve an amendment to commercial purchase and sale agreement.
I hear a motion?
Motion.
So here's, I got a second. Any discussion or any questions on this? I can answer these for you in a minute. I can. I can. Here's what happened on that. If you're, we made the agreement with the Highland Heights Church that we sell the property. We'd pay them in three different installments. We were supposed to be able to take the property in total by this June. Because of COVID, we were not able to do that. I, I mean, they were not able to finish their church, which is being built in front of Jimmy Floyd. We did secure, if you remember, 2.8 acres, that when you got ready to build a jail, you've got a staging area for that. So that's already been secured. So there was not really a need, since we're not building a jail right now, for us to force them to move out, go into another church, and then have to re-move again. So Mr. Ken Thornberry called me and said, hey, what is your thoughts on this? I talked to Mike. I said, I don't see an immediate need for us, but I wanted to bring it to you to see if you saw any problems with that. Mike said, we probably need a good, another agreement. So he drew that up, put that in your packet. And any questions, I can answer for you? Yes, sir?
Do you get any monetary money from doing this, from extending it?
Oh, we do not.
Is that appropriate, or no? I didn't know.
We just, we didn't have the need to be there. We didn't see it. We, I guess we thought, being a good neighbor here, if we had a big need to get in there and it was going to cost us some money, you know, maybe so, but we didn't see a need for that. But that's, yes, sir. Commissioner Walker? Third installment will be made, and we'll take the property in 20, in March of 2021. It'll be out. Sir? All you're doing is going to let them stay there instead of June to next March, because their facility's not ready. That's short version, yes. That's short version, yes. Other questions?
Good?
Are we good? Any questions? Okay, are we ready to vote? We will vote, uh, please, uh, we are ready to vote, we won't do a voice vote, Mike said probably since... So, uh, if you're ready to vote, please cast your vote. And this is my fault, this should have been brought to budget. I forgot, I apologize for that, that's my fault. Mr. Bannack?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Bannack?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes.
Ash? Yes.
Breeze?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Yes.
Please record. 24 and one, resolution passes. Thank you for that.
Resolution 20-8-8, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee to approve and accept the bond of Wilson County Property Assessor Stephen Goodall. Any discussion?
Commissioner Gentry?
Is it appropriate to bundle these next three together, since they're all bonds? To make a motion for the bond altogether? Second. Second.
I got a motion and a second to group all three of the bonds together. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The record was unanimous, and so, does it need to read all three of them now, Mike?
Resolution 20-8-9, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee to approve and accept the bond of Wilson County Clerk and Master Millie Sloan. Resolution 810, County Commission of Wilson County, Tennessee to approve and accept the bond and Wilson County Road Commission, Zone 2, for Chad Bernard. I got a motion and a second to approve the bonds for Mr. Chad Bernard, Millie Sloan, and Ms. Stephen Goodall.
Any discussion on any of them? All in favor, say aye.
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 The record was unanimous on all three. Motion to go back into regular session, do I hear a second? Got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? This time, is there any old business to come before this body? Any new business? Mr. Gentry?
I have a question. We have a rule out there that, uh, we're mandating masks in the county. I know at the end of the month, the governor has got an emergency order till the 29th of August. I would like to make a motion that we, uh, make the mask a highly recommended, mandated for the county, starting the first December.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Glover?
We're going to have visitors that have to come up and at least state their name on the way out.
Uh, we definitely can do that.
Or they can do, they can do it in the back.
Okay, all right.
Go right down the front.
Give me one second and we'll, if that mic is hot back there. Commissioner Walker?
I'd just like to state my name.
Thank you for that. If you would like to stand up in the back and, uh, state your name, uh, we would love to know who you are, uh, and welcome you to the county commission. Um, you can stand up right where you're at, lower your mask, and speak if you'd like to.
My name's Carl Latula, Scoutmaster, Troop 293, out of College Hills Church of Christ in Lebanon.
Okay.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
She said she can't hear, but they come up on the mic, can we get them all to you?
All right, that'd be good too. We'll invite you up. Just come on up, all of you, uh, in line there, and we'll let you speak and move over to the right.
Go ahead. My name's Carl Latula, I'm the Scoutmaster of Boy Scout Troop 293, out of College Hills Church of Christ in Lebanon.
My name is Scott Marlowe, without the E. Uh, I think we, I think we had the same name at one point, but I think my family dropped it for some reason. It was nice to meet you. And my son is Austin Marlowe, and he's the one that organized us being here tonight. Thank you, guys, for having us here.
I'm Austin Marlowe. Uh, don't really know what to say. Thank you for letting us come.
My name is Andrew Rawlings, thank you for letting us come.
My name is Jamie Reagan, I am the Assistant Scoutmaster of Troop 293, and we appreciate you letting us come.
Martha Seaborn, parent of scout, thank you.
My name is Shelley Rawlings, and I'm the mother of Andy Rawlings. Thank you.
Christy Cobal.
My name is Aiden Boas, and thank you for letting us all come here today.
Thank you.
My name is Oliver Hawkins, thank you for letting us come here today.
My name is Christian Cobal, thank you for letting us come.
Austin Bellotti, thank you for letting us come.
My name is Jackson Cook, thank you for letting us come.
I'm Ian Hawkins of Troop 293, it's been nice being here.
My name's Peggy Hawkins, 293, I'm the committee chair, I guess, thanks.
Thank you for being here. Commissioner Glover, great idea on that part. I need one more motion, unless somebody else had, Commissioner Walker?
No.
Mr. Walker?
I would like to make a consideration, whoever's with recreation or welfare, whoever does the, do all the fundraising, non-profit organizations, take a look at this fine organization, I don't know that I would like that community to take that.
Anything else? One more motion. All in favor, say aye.